Okay, it is five o'clock, so I will go ahead and get this meeting called to order to respect everyone's time. So thank you, everybody, for attending today. Thank you for being here, for staff, board members, for any community that members that are watching as well. We really appreciate you logging on to join us today. So thank you. At this time, I'd like to go through our board norms as we do at every meeting. So as a board, we agree to respect differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself. The board, we agree to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at our at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. So thank you, everybody, just a reminder of our board norms. So with that, I'll ask Bridget to go ahead and do roll call for us, please. Thank you.
Sounds great. Yolanda Clark? Yolanda Clark here. Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew here.
Janie Humphries?
Janie here.
Randy Lopez?
Randy here.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page here.
Valdenia Nguyen?
Valdenia Nguyen here.
Stacy Yeager?
Stacy Presser.
Thank you, everyone.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Welcome. And with that, can I go ahead and get a motion to approve our special agenda today?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve our special agenda today. Any discussion? All right, Bridget, go ahead and do roll call for us, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen?
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Our agenda has been approved for today. So with that, we'll continue on and with our reports of our superintendent, Dr. Faust. You're on mute there, Dr. Faust.
I recommend that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the publication of the notice of hearing for the 2021 budget as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Mr. President, Vice Chair, tonight, we're going to bring before you the notice of hearing publication for your approval. I have on the Zoom Ms. Tracy Kaiser. She's our Executive Director of Business Operations, and she will walk us through the forms. Tracy?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, Board members, Dr. Faust. I do have a very short presentation, just to highlight some of the items on the budget document, as well as the items on the agenda tonight. So if I can share my screen here. Looks like the host may be disabled, but if Joe or Rashid could help me out?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Is everybody able to see that? Is that large enough?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great. So this is the notice of hearing document that we are asking you to approve for us to publish in the newspaper. The purpose of this document is that it tells taxpayers what our proposed mill levy is going to be. So we are keeping the mill levy flat this year. We are not asking for any overall change in the mill levy, but we do have some changes within the different funds. So as you can see, general fund is by law 20 mills. That goes directly to the state. The supplemental general fund, which is also called the local option budget, or LOB, we are changing from 9.103 to 11.445. We are keeping capital outlay the same at eight mills. And then we are lowering the bond and interest mill levy from 12.502 to 10.16. And so as you can see, that keeps our total mill levy at 49.605 last year and 49.605 this year. The library mill levy is also staying flat at 11.145 last year and 11.145 this year. The Form 150 is where we estimate all of our waitings for the year. These are all inflated to make sure that we have the budget authority in case those numbers would come in a little bit higher. So we do estimate high on this form, which gives us a total general fund budget authority of 182 million. We do not anticipate we'll receive that much money, but this gives us the budget authority, so we don't have to republish the budget should we go over on any of our estimates. For the transportation waiting, we were estimating 2.5 million. If we are not transporting children on the count day on September 21st, then we will not receive that funding. There is a clause in the law, though, that allows us to claim the funding we received in 2016, 2017, which is this 1.73 million. So if we are not transporting students on September 21st, we would receive the 1.73 million, so about 800,000 less than we were originally anticipating. There's also a place in the law that says we cannot exceed 110% of the prior year's state aid. So if we receive this 1.73 million, then next year, we would be able to receive that plus 10%, and that would continue every year hereafter. So obviously, it's going to take us several years to get back up to the 2.5 million.
They don't take in consideration, I'm sorry, Wanda Brownlee Page, that we're going through a crisis, COVID. That doesn't matter?
Right. We did talk to KSDE about that, and Dale Dennis actually talked to the person, the legislator who wrote that law, and there really is no loophole in it. Their recommendation was that we could possibly try to change the law when the legislature reconvenes in January, but obviously, that's quite a gamble at this point to know what they would do. So for the general fund, I just wanted to highlight, here's the 182 million I mentioned. We're really only anticipating, you know, receiving a little over 5 million more from last year, but this gives us the budget authority in case those dollars would happen to come in, that we would have it. But as far as our budget goes in business plus, we are not anticipating, you know, receiving that much money. So for the supplemental general, our balance, beginning balance last year was 5.9 million, and this year, it is 672,000. So that's the reason we are recommending changing the mill levy in this fund to adjust for that, as well as asking for a transfer from contingency reserve of 3.25 million. And I will touch on that here a little bit more in just a moment. The school retirement fund, USD 500, is the only district in the state that has this fund. And we've not levied any taxes in this fund for several years, but we are still getting small amounts of delinquent taxes in. So right now, our current balance is $5,375. KSDE has talked to us about potentially closing this fund, and so later in the year, we will ask you to transfer that $5,000 to capital outlay, which would allow us to close this fund. For contingency reserve, our balance last year was 14.7 million. This year, we're starting off with 14.4 million. And this is where we have the transfer budgeted to supplemental general fund for 3.25 million. Two years ago, we did something similar and transferred 4 million from capital outlay to supplemental general fund. Both of these are just strategic ways to be able to improve the mill levy. And the reason we're able to do that is the special education fund, we've been able to transfer the last few years a much larger amount than what was needed to pay for that fund, and because we're able to carry over a balance in special education. So you can see here that our current balance is 14.9 million, where special ed has typically been closer to 6 million. So that allows us to reduce our transfer in 2021 in special education and reallocate those funds, that 3.25 million in contingency reserve. So by the end of the year, our contingency reserve balance will be the same based on those two transfers. It's just a strategic way for us to keep the mill levy more level. And so this chart is just another snapshot showing that our mill levy last year was 49.605. It's staying the same at 49.605, and also, the library is staying flat at 11.145. So the other item on the agenda tonight is the second publication. The important thing about this document is to note that it does exclude our bond and interest fund. So our bond and interest fund, we are lowering the mill levy to make up for the increase in supplemental general, but is not reflected on this form. This bylaw, we're required to publish in the county newspaper. If any of these funds on the left exceed an increase of over 1.8%, which is the consumer price index currently. So obviously, with the change we're making in supplemental general, it's over the 1.8%. But again, remember, this does not include our bond and interest fund, so there is no change in the mill levy. And so if you have, you know, community members who may not understand mill levy and all these documents, you know, the bottom line really is that, you know, you can share with them that their tax rate will not be changing in 2021.
Tracy, this is Dr. Nguyen. Your tax rate may not change. Will the tax amount change?
That depends on the valuation, on how that comes in. You know, the assessed valuation, we get an estimate from the UG on what they think it will be, but then around October, they actually give us what the true valuation is at that time. And so, you know, there's always a change that they can kind of change the mill levy partially to get the dollar amount that we've requested. So there potentially be changes, but we won't know that until we have the full assessed valuation from the UG.
But when you say the rate, help me understand the 9.1 rate in 1920 and 11.4 rate in 2021?
Uh huh. Right. We, if you recall, some of the board members that were here last year, we had changed, we weren't wanting to have more funding in the bond and interest fund, so we increased the mill levy last year in bond and interest, decreased it in supplemental general. And so we're kind of going back, flipping a little bit back to a happier medium in both of those funds. So the 9.103 to the 11.445, the difference between those two rates is being reduced in the bond and interest. So the overall, those are the only two funds that are changing, so the overall mill rate is still the same.
Correct, but you're, but we're, help me understand, please, but you are taxing on a higher amount, correct?
On a higher assessed valuation?
No, a higher total levy. You're levying, that levy amount has increased, correct?
Let me go back here to the first page.
Yeah, because you're 9.1, you're 11.44.
Right. So yeah, so you can see here in supplemental general, we are keeping the amount the same, the 51505 and 51505 went up a dollar, or $40, $60, whatever it is. But then we are decreasing our bond and interest. So in reality, you know, like you look at capital outlay, it's a higher amount, but overall, the dollar amount, let me see here, the total expenditures, it's going from 409,000 to 471,000.
Right. And then the mill levy, does it just apply to the property tax?
Correct.
Now, are you, are we increasing the amount that we are levying? Property tax?
Well, that's just based on the assessed valuation. So yes, I guess, in reality, the dollar amount is going up, but as the assessed valuations go up, that helps compensate it for it with the mill levy. If that makes sense.
It makes sense, but at the end of the day, will the taxpayer see an increase in their taxes based on the rate that KCK, I mean, we're just talking about KCK property owners, 55 or so thousand, that if the city chooses to increase the assessed valuation of their property based on our increased amount levied, what, you don't know the exact dollar amount, but yes or no, will there be an increase in taxes to the property owner with that scenario?
If their assessed valuation on their home goes up, then it could be a higher dollar amount, but the mill levy is still the same. But that would be based on what their assessed valuation of their home is.
Now, did we have to do that? Was there another accounting maneuver that 500 could have done not to increase that that amount of taxes to be levied?
Not really. When it's based on the assessed valuation, I mean, all that we can do is try to keep the mill levy the same, but if the assessed valuation is going up, then that isn't anything that we have any control over.
Okay, but we could reduce the mill levy?
We could, yes.
Okay.
But you'd run into problems then with, you know, having the money for like your bond and interest to be able to make those payments. So, you know, if we adjust that mill levy down.
And what was the logic of, let's say, flipping back and forth between the accounting maneuvers? What's the logic there?
Last year, we were strategic in trying to increase the money we had in the bond and interest fund, so that we can continue to control the mill levy down the road, you know, 10 years from now. This was a strategic move on our part. We had enough. We had that 5.9 million in LOB in supplemental general, so we didn't feel like that was something we want to continue to carry over. That's money that is, you know, raised and taken from the taxpayers. And so for us to sit on 5.9 million and continue to tax them at that higher rate, we just felt like it was a better thing to do, to put that money into the bond and interest, so that that would help, you know, years down the road. So now we're just kind of trying to go back to somewhere in the middle, so that we don't have that big carryover in supplemental general, but we're also to make, also able to make our bond and interest payments.
Okay, but at the end of the day, there, our taxpayer could see an increase in taxes?
If their assessed valuation goes up, yes.
And chances are, the city will do that. Okay, thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any other questions about the budget documents or anything on tonight's agenda.
Tracy, you've been very thorough. I've really appreciated the in-depthness that you and Dennis have provided us. I don't have any additional questions.
I don't have a question, but I have a concern, because we get asked, I know I do all the time, about are the taxes going to go up? We get letters, and that scares me, because I thought we had expressed that we were concerned about that. We didn't want the taxes to go up, because they're going to blame us more so than the city. So that's, that's just my concern.
Yeah, all we really have control over is the mill levy, you know, and that's what our, our goal has been, is to keep that flat.
And how do you define flat?
The same mill levy, the 49.605 to the 49.605, same as the library.
Yeah, but that we could anticipate with strict, strict look, look on, on the penny to reduce the taxes if, if you can see far enough ahead. So. When they go up, we're going to have to answer to that.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments for Tracy or for Dennis? Thank you, Tracy, for the presentation, for getting us the information. And Dennis, thank you for getting us the information. So appreciate your time today.
Absolutely.
So we'll need a motion to approve the publication of notice of hearing for the budget.
So moved.
Okay.
Been moved and seconded. Any further questions or discussion?
One last question, Tracy. What's the balance then in our contingency fund, please?
14.4 million.
That's before the 3.2, isn't it?
Correct. Correct. Yes, that's before the 3.2 million transfer, and then we will be able later in the year to transfer that back in. So at the end of the year, our 14.4 balance will be the same.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. I appreciated your questions, just for that clarity for our staff and our community members to understand the budget process. So thank you for your questions and everyone else for your comments and questions. No other questions or comments? I would enter, or to go ahead and have a roll call, Bridget, please.
Bridget, you're on mute.
Thank you. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen?
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you all.
Motion passes. Thank you. Appreciate everybody again. Thank you, Tracy, and thank you, Dennis, for that information. Now, we have to approve the contingency reserve transfer that Tracy was talking about as well.
I recommend that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the transfer of 3,250,000 from the contingency reserve fund to the supplemental general fund in order to control the mill levy as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer, Tracy Kaiser, Executive Director of Business Operations, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved.
Back in.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Again, thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Dr. Faust. Bridget, go ahead and do a roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen?
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
Stacy Yeager?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Great. Thank you, everybody. Motion passes. And then now we have our, approving the second publication of property tax report as well.
The recommendation is that the Kansas City Board of Education approve the second publication of the property tax review as submitted by Dennis Covington, Chief Financial Officer Tracy Kaiser, Executive Director of Business Operations, and is recommended by myself, Superintendent of Schools.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Yeager and Janie. It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions or comments? Right, thank you. Roll call, Bridget, please.
Got it. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries?
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Valdenia Nguyen?
Valdenia Nguyen, yes.
And Stacy Yeager?
Stacy, yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Motion passes. Thank you. Again, thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Dennis, Dr. Faust, for the work on presenting the budget and the information today. Really appreciate you and all the staff working, staying a little extra tonight to get through this special meeting. Before we adjourn, just a couple of things, and I'm not sure, I think Dr. Faust may have had something he wanted to share as well. But before we get there, just a couple of quick reminders, well, a few things. One, again, just want to give a shout out to Joe Fives, who will be retiring at the end of this month. I'm not sure if he'll be joining us on Friday or not, but if not, just wanted to give you a quick shout out and thank you for all your work, especially in these last several months when everything has gone virtual and, and we've relied so heavily on you and your team. Just wanted to give you a shout out, because you guys have been working hard and making sure that all of our students have that access and our staff have what they need. So really appreciate you, your staff, your team. I know it's not a one-man show, but you've been amazing. So just want to give you a shout out. Any, any quick words for, for our friends on the call today?
It's, it's been a pleasure and an honor to have served. Everyone that works here on the board is so dedicated. It's, it's just an amazing group of people, and we have the students of the district, you know, always at the forefront. So yeah, absolutely. Thank you all.
Thank you so much, Joe. We really appreciate everything you've done. We'll miss you. Stay in touch, and I'll reach out whenever I have more Zoom questions for you.
Please.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. Thank you.
And then just a reminder for our board members, we do have Friday, a couple of, a couple of conversations we need to have. But before then, just wanted to acknowledge, you know, we've had, all of our board members have received several emails and calls and conversations around what's happening with, with the fall school year. And I know our staff has, have as well, Dr. Faust and your team, Ms. Lankas, Ms. Tishman, all the staff working on the reentry plans, Matt Anderson and everyone. So we, we really appreciate your diligence and your work on putting together the options that we have. I just want to acknowledge the challenges, the uncertainty, the anxiety that our staff have and are facing, the questions that still remain. I promise you that we are reading your emails. We are taking into consideration all those concerns, all those thoughts that you've put forward and, and ideas that you have, and, and we're taking all of that into consideration. I, I trust that Dr. Faust and his team are doing everything they possibly can to have the conversations that are necessary to provide answers, solutions when we can. When we don't have answers, maybe have some ideas and different options that the board will have to consider. There's still a lot for us to consider and talk about, but I just wanted to acknowledge that, that even though we can't necessarily talk about a lot today, I just wanted to acknowledge that we hear you and we're reading and seeing your messages, and we're doing what's necessary so that we can continue to move our district forward in a positive manner and provide different options and solutions for all of our staff, student and families to keep us all safe, but continue to provide that high-quality education. So we'll continue the conversations. I know there are still questions out there. Please be, give us a little bit of grace. And I know that's hard to say from, from where I'm sitting, and, and I understand that. But, but, but please know that, that we, we hear you and we are doing what we can, and, and we hope to have some more answers or at least some more possibilities for all of you as, as we move forward. So thank you for reaching out. Continue to reach out. That's why we're here. You know how to find us and how to reach us, and, and I'd encourage you to, to let us know what you're feeling, thinking. As a board and as a staff, we will come together to work on your behalf to keep you safe and healthy and to provide that, that highest quality education for all our students. Dr. Faust, I'm not sure if you had anything you wanted to share as well?
Just, just a little, just to let everyone know that we are working. It takes a little bit of, of time for us to, to move the ship. In order to turn the ship, it's like, we have to go out wide and then turn, so it's not a quick U-turn. I mean, every decision that we make costs a dollar. And I'm being really generous when I say a dollar, so we have to make sure that budgetarily, we give the board recommendations that will not put the board in a, in a position that will cause an additional expense. So just know that we are working. We have to definitely pay attention, close attention to the negotiated agreement, the 186 days, we have to look and see. And so the calendar committee is working together. It does take some time to look and see, and they've got to make sure that they do not violate any things in there. And so that's the biggest thing. And so we'll be talking. We'll, we'll have some things for you soon, board, but it just does, it's, it's a big feat. And so we want the community to know that, yes, we understand the, the start date is coming, but we also have to understand this is a big budget. And so when people are working or people want to get, have to get paid, and so we want to make sure that we're paying them, and then when 186 days are up, technically, we will have three weeks still left of school. So we've got to figure out what will that look like. And currently, if we go with the, if we were to stop in May, where we are, three weeks of school left would be about a million dollars a week for, for the budget. So understand that we hear you. We see all of your emails, but we are wanting to make sure that we are doing, and we'll say, being fiscally responsible for everyone. And again, we want everyone to be safe. But we also have to do, we're financially responsible for this dollar that the feds, the state, and the local... the feds, the state and the local is presenting to us. So we will, we are working diligently. And I know that Dom and Matt and myself and Dennis and Kelly and there's a whole lot of people that they're all working with. And we will be present some options and we'll say some, several options for you because, of course, we also have to get in food nutrition involved. We've got to get transportation involved. And so there are different budget strings that comes from all of those. And again, when we look at the students and if the students aren't in, then if we don't have them, then we've got to look at the feds and how they fund us. So the at-risk dollars would be at risk. So we've got to take a definite and a hard look at some things. And we will only give you what we believe is what's fiscally sound in addition to making sure that's safe. So community, understand the board has some tough decisions to make, but it's in everyone's best interest. And so, yeah, and I definitely want to say, what's today, day's twenty-eight? Thirty-first is my twenty-first wedding anniversary. So I'm just going to give my wife a shout out. So we'll end that on a happy note.
And board, I just want to remind you that we do have training on next Friday with KASB.
Thank you, Dr. Yeager. We're looking forward to that.
Mr. Lopez? And this is kind of a question to you with a side question, Dr. Faust. So are we to only get the suggestion or update on August eleventh? What was the first date that you anticipate the board receiving some insight on the plan?
Thank you for that question. Our next actual board meeting, you're right, is August eleventh, when our staff will present some different options for us to look at and to vote on as a board. You know, and I'll be honest, Dr. Faust and Ms. Page and I are having a conversation tomorrow just to get a better understanding of some of those options and kind of where we're at. I will definitely keep the board updated in terms of what that conversation is so that you all are aware. So we're all on the same page. I want to make sure everyone is on the same page and we're all feel like we're all moving in the same direction. So and if we need to do something before the eleventh, you know, I think that's a conversation that the board can have and that we can, that is an option out there.
Like, I wouldn't want us to have discussion and then on the eleventh pose a thousand different challenges for all the work that the staff has done. So I guess the ask is, could we have some of those ideas prior to the eleventh one and/or could the board meet and discuss our concerns, reactions to the emails with some, after you and Ms. Page meet with Dr. Faust, knowing a little bit more of the structure? Because it doesn't seem appropriate to get options on the eleventh and be expected to confirm on the eleventh.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen, for those comments and those suggestions. Dr. Faust, I'm not sure if you wanted to add anything. I'll just, I'll just say that absolutely, after Ms. Page and Dr. Faust and I have a conversation tomorrow, I'll keep you all updated on what that conversation looks like. I don't anticipate that we'll have full details of what's to come tomorrow, just because it's been, you know, I know our staff has been working super hard, but I don't know that we'll have all the details tomorrow. But I'll be able to update you all on what we do have. I do know Ms. Chalinkas, Ms. Tishman and the rest of the team has been working hard on that. But I do agree, we should have some options out in front of us sooner than the eleventh, I think, would be helpful, just so that we can react to it, have something to react to and give feedback to and really be informed on our decision-making. I would ask if you do have specific questions that you would like to be addressed, you know, even in the conversation I have with Dr. Faust and Ms. Page tomorrow, please email me. And that goes to any of the board members. If there are specific questions that you think need to be asked, please send me an email. And I'm happy to bring that up tomorrow in our conversation and to keep those on a list so that we all have the same questions and answers that we're looking at as well. But I agree that it would help us to have some information and some of the plans, some of the options ahead of the eleventh to be able to react to with time. And, Dr. Faust, I'm not sure if you had any other thoughts.
No, I agree. I agree with you. It's, the reason why it can't be faster is because we have the negotiated agreement that we have to pay attention to and then the calendar. And so if we're able to come to a consensus with the calendar, I mean, there, we'll definitely, of course, we'll give all options with tomorrow, well, not all options, but I'll give calendar options with Ms. President and Vice President on tomorrow and give them some food for thought and so you can make a decision as to which direction we need to go. But definitely, you know, we maybe, it's a lot. I'll just say that we have a lot and I don't want us to do bits and pieces of this so that we miss anything. But we just need to be able to give you a whole plan. And we will have it before, of course, definitely. We've got to have it before the eleventh. But individuals have been working. I can tell you, they have been working. And we want to thank, I mean, KNEA, because I've had conversations with Dom and so has Kelly. And so, I mean, KNEA is great to work with. And so we just got to, you know, definitely look at our ratified contract because we want to make sure that we are abiding by what the language that's in there.
Mr. Lopez, is it possible that we could maybe have a short update at our Saturday meeting? We were already going to meet for an hour afterwards? Is that maybe possible? Since we'll already be in a meeting?
I would say, remember, the Saturday, you mean a Saturday, an update from the superintendent? Because he explained that he will not be able to join us on that weekend. Or are you saying from the president and vice president?
The president and the vice president, maybe? Just something to consider. You could consider that after tomorrow's meeting.
Okay. Mr. Goheen, what would be the appropriate?
If you decide you want to have, I mean, there could be a communication at the meeting without any real issue. But if you're going to have a discussion about it, you would need to amend the notice for Saturday's meeting. I believe the notice has gone out. If it hasn't gone out, then you would just modify the notice if you're going to do that.
It has gone out.
It has, so you have.
Okay, what, all right, I have an alternative. What if we, could we pencil in maybe for Tuesday? We could have an update on communications on the, on back to school for an hour, like an hour or two on Tuesday at five o'clock, have an update on back to, how we're progressing our back to school, just, I mean, just for that? Would that be acceptable? That way, we're not mixing it up with anything else?
And you're saying next Tuesday, a week from today?
Yeah, a week from today. Would that, would that be acceptable?
I'm not sure how everyone's calendars are, if that's something we could look at or.
Dr. Nguyen, would that be acceptable with you?
It makes sense, just to have some communication.
Just on this subject, nothing else? A short meeting?
Correct.
I would agree. This is pretty major. And so while we understand that you all are working on the back end, our community and our parents want to know what's happening and what next steps are. And our teachers and our staff have questions. And I also want to make sure that we, the board, are not holding up, Dr. Faust, your staff, from making decisions. If we are holding you up, we need to know. If there's any type of uncertainties or we're holding your plans up at all because of our decisions, we want to make sure that we're there for you all as well. But definitely, our community wants to know a little bit of something.
We, no, the board's not holding us up. It's, we have to, the calendar. So we have to go back and almost technically start from scratch with the calendar. And so I know that you want to do something on that Tuesday, but the calendar may not be ready. Because you have to go back and, we have to still do the one thousand one hundred sixteen minutes. We've got to get those in by the state. Because even though they were saying that we could go, you know, when the executive order came through, it was still going to be, after, it was going to be after Labor Day, but they never gave us any lenience on those one thousand one hundred sixteen minutes. So we have to make sure by state law that we meet those one thousand one hundred sixteen minutes. And so there are days in there that we've got to talk through to make sure that we're meeting those, that seat time with our students.
Can I recommend, if we do it, oh, I didn't hear, could I recommend that we do it on the seventh, since we're already meeting from twelve to three? Can we just add it on, since we'll already be meeting together?
Well, I think our community needs to understand some of the restrictions that are in that one thousand eighty-nine-page document. They don't understand the time restrictions and stuff. And we need to, we need to communicate with our community like the other districts are doing, I think. And we, there's a lot of things we cannot decide on Tuesday, but I think we need to be communicating with our community of what we're having to work on. And I think the NEA needs to be part of that communication. They need to understand that we have to work on the calendar. And and we need to get out there and tell our parents, this is what we're working on. We have, we don't have everything written, but this is what we're working on. And just, it's that we're all working on the same page.
And I think the fourth gives us a chance to talk to each other about, you know, the, what we don't know will happen, but what we are thinking, you know, we have ideas. And that if then by the seventh, Mr. Lopez and Ms. Page, in conjunction with Dr. Faust's administration, can even tailor our thoughts, then Dr. Yeager, since we'll be together, I mean, this is, this is a very serious situation that our administration is using millions of man-hours and sweat equity to get it done. But also, we don't want to make a mistake. And so having communication with ourselves, flushing these ideas, I think is important. So I still believe the fourth for now or whatever.
Well, I need to include the superintendent. I remember him saying that he was taken off for his anniversary. Dr. Faust, which days will you be off? You're on mute.
I'll send my dates to President. So yes, I didn't want to put all my business out on front screen.
Sorry. I'm just saying, if you're not going to be in attendance, then it's important that when we're trying to make dates. Or maybe since we're together on Friday and Saturday, if there's a better date.
I'll, I'll have someone stand, sit in for me. We'll have everything, whatever was needed, they'll be here. We'll have all the information. Thank you.
And there's other things besides the calendar. The calendar is in their hand. The other meat and potatoes, we have to talk about.
I would just prefer for us, rather than piecemeal it, be able to have all the information. But if we want to piecemeal it and do chunks at a time, it's whatever the majority of the board decides. I'm just saying, we should have time so we can sit through and know what decisions are going to be made, rather than chucking it out and piecemealing it.
I think that's, you know, I think both sides are really good in terms, I mean, very accurate in terms of trying not to piecemeal it, right? I totally get that and trying to get as much information as we can. But I do, I do think there is merit. And me personally, and this is just a personal thing, I feel like our community really wants to hear at least what's going on and just to feel a little bit more at ease. And I would just ask folks to kind of take a breath, right? And there are a ton of working parts to this. And there are pieces that are working, different people, different groups, calendar committee, the NEA, you know, negotiated agreement. So, you know, there are a lot of moving pieces to it. But, you know, perhaps if that's been suggested next Tuesday, sorry, I'm looking at my calendar, next Tuesday at five o'clock, I just want to get a feel for, you know, how folks are, would that work for folks? I think that gives our staff, I think that gives our staff a week to continue doing the work that they're doing. And then give us, and it would just be an update, right? It would really just be an update to the board so that we can have conversation amongst ourselves as well, prior to that next board meeting. Wouldn't really need to decide anything, but I think that could be helpful. With that Tuesday, how does five o'clock work for folks? I would love to have everyone present, if available, so if we can find a day that's possible. And, Dr. Faust, you and I can talk tomorrow with Ms. Page, see how that works. But, board members, how do you feel?
So you probably need an alternative date, since we're not going to for sure say a date today, it sounds like.
You want Bridget to take a roll call to see who's available?
Well, it sounds like the, what was that? The, the fourth? Is next Tuesday at five P.M. Thumbs up if that, thumbs down if that does not work for you. Thumbs down. Okay, so we've got two members who it does not work for. Okay. I'd really love to find a date when all of us can be present.
What about Monday?
Monday's my busiest day.
What does Wednesday morning look like for folks? Yolanda, I know you're, you're working. So that might be, and, Dr. Yeager, I know you're at work as well. So that might be a little bit difficult. Or Wednesday, anytime. We do have our board agenda prep meeting that afternoon.
Wednesday's fine by me.
Is there a time preference for you, Dr. Yeager?
No, I can, I can make Wednesday morning or afternoon work.
Okay. Ms. Drew, how about you? Wednesday, anytime works? Okay. Dr. Nguyen, Yolanda?
You all can go ahead without me. I'd be okay. But Wednesday morning would not work for me.
What about Wednesday afternoon for you, Yolanda?
I can do Wednesday afternoon.
Is there a certain time of day that works better? An hour?
I could do four o'clock or after.
Can't do four.
Oh, okay.
This is fun. Okay.
We couldn't do Saturday. I know she said it went out. We're together for our board meeting on the seventh from twelve to three.
Saturday works for me.
Friday, we're together. Well, I'm just saying.
So there is, you're right. So there's two other options. This Saturday, we are together. We could extend that Saturday meeting a little bit to have this conversation. I understand we'd be asking staff to give us an update and, you know, maybe they can give Ms. Page and I an update, but we would ask some staff there. We are together next Friday as well from twelve to three for that KESB training, if we needed to extend that time as well.
That would work for me.
That Friday, since we're together twelve to three, could we have that conversation from like three to five on the seventh?
The one question that might be coming up is, when are teaching staff supposed to be reporting back? Do we want to have this conversation before that? Or not?
It's been a hot topic.
That's a hot topic. Do you want to put this conversation off after that date or not? Just throwing that out there.
Well, you still have time to, Greg, amend the notice?
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I mean, the only caveat I would throw out there, and I don't know what the discussions have been, is that's one of the items, I believe, that's being discussed with the union. And I don't know whether they're going to have a recommendation for you guys by Saturday. They may, but.
We don't have the calendar. So we had to just move past that topic. However, what about the staff? If we extend, how does that impact MVP staff?
Oh, it doesn't. I mean.
I would just suggest we either have it the Saturday or have it by Tuesday, the fourth. So that's just my suggestion, but.
But will they have it by then? Right, that's my understanding.
They're not going to have the calendar by Tuesday. So they're. They're not going to have the calendar by Tuesday, so there's a ton of other topics that, that we need to express interest, sort out.
I think we specifically need to know what we're talking about when we meet.
So we're already going to be together Saturday. We just want to make it to it Saturday.
Dr. Yeager? You had a thought?
Yes, I was saying that we're already going to extend it, so I may not be able to stay after for that, because I have, I'm going out of town Saturday afternoon, so I can't, you know, so I may not be able to stay for that full level of discussion this Saturday, because I already have planned arrangements that I mentioned when we were setting the interviews.
So there's five out of seven people can make it on Tuesday, you said?
Five out of seven on Tuesday. I think Saturday, I know we'll be getting together on Saturday. I'd prefer, I think it, Saturday might be a little too soon to ask staff to give us an update on certain things and...
That's what I was thinking.
Ask staff to come in on a Saturday afternoon, midday. I just prefer not, to try to stay away from that if we can, especially on such short notice.
If everything, if everything works for Wednesdays, just so you'll know, don't hold up because of me Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning is another option. We could have six, sounds like we'd have six out of seven board members Wednesday morning.
I have a KSAB workshop at noon on Wednesday.
I think we could try to do it in the early, and I would ask Dr. Faust, I wonder what Wednesday looks like for staff to be able to, for you and your staff to perhaps give us an update on that, if we could do maybe, I don't know how early y'all want to get together, I'm down 7, 8, 9, whatever works for y'all.
Not 7:00 AM, Randy. Not, let's not get carried away now.
I'll make whatever work.
Do they already have professional development or something on Wednesday morning, and 4 or 5 would be better.
Dr. Faust, do you have any thoughts about next Wednesday?
Let me, I'd have to check the other calendar, have that calendar pulled up. The, I know we have agenda prep at 4:00, so, I mean, if, you know, 2:00, we could do, I, I need to look at the calendar, and maybe, I don't know if anyone's on the, I'd have to scroll through my email, and I don't, I'm not, I don't want to do that right now to prolong the meeting, but I know definitely 2, 3 o'clock works for us, and I'm saying...
When we get together on Friday, can we solidify a time?
Yeah, can you give us some, give that some thought, Dr. Faust, and I think maybe if board members can hold 2:00 on Wednesday, it sounds like that might be a good time for most, and then we can get some more feedback from Dr. Faust from, in terms of staffing, just to have further conversation that gives staff some time to get some information worked up and gives us time to have a conversation. Does that sound okay? Board members, can we hold Wednesday at 2:00 PM? I'm sorry, Yolanda, but we can chat, and if you have other thoughts, you can email us your questions and whatnot as well.
Okay, and I'll just check my calendar for 2 and see if there's anything I can do, so...
And Randy, could we clarify what exactly what we're talking about so we can be prepared?
Well, I think what it sounds like is really getting an update from Dr. Faust and staff in terms of where we are with just the, you know...
General planning for the fall, in terms of returning, planning, different options, and I know we'll have our agenda prep meeting that afternoon as well, so some of that should already have been covered by staff.
So I think for us, it'll be, really for board members, it'll be hearing updates and for planning, and then allowing us to have, to respond to that and have conversation, and then give thought to it to be able to ask our staff questions, or our superintendent some questions that he can take back to our staff as they're preparing for next, for that Tuesday's board meeting on the 11th.
Okay, sounds great.
Agreeable to everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other, okay, well, I appreciate everyone's time today. I know we took a little longer than maybe we wanted to this afternoon, but I appreciate, there's a lot going on, and so I appreciate your patience and just your hard work, again to our staff. I know you guys are working hours on hours, and we appreciate that, but, you know, and to our staff that are out there, our community members that have questions and concerns, we are working for you, and I promise we are doing what we need to do to provide a safe, high-quality learning environment for all. To our board members, I appreciate you and your time and talents, and we'll see you all on Friday afternoon. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.